It's an honor to be here with our candidates for this evening and to get to ask them some questions and learn a little bit more about them. And on the way in, you may have grabbed one of those yellow handouts. And there's a short bio of each candidate on there, as well as an explanation of how the question and answer session is going to go. I have to apologize, one mistake down. I have left off Don Harvey's education, which is probably important. So I'm going to add that to that if you guys are taking notes or anything like that. He has a B.S. in business economics from Missouri State. He also has a master's from public... From what is it?
In public administration.
In public administration, from Troy State in Alabama. So I need to add that and make sure that was corrected. And I'm so sorry, I apologize to you for that. And I wanted to thank Mrs. Shawna Robinson, she will be the moderator for this evening and going to be asking the questions for us. And without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to them. Our candidates, from left to right, is Mr. Don Harvey, Ms. Angela Hahn, Mr. Alvin, Ms. Kelly Barnes, and Mr. Bob Duncan.
Okay. Angela, we'll begin... Don, I'm sorry. We'll begin with question number one, and then you will each have a minute and a half to answer. They will have... The lady's done every time as well. And then after each person's done answering, then it moves on to the next one. So question number one, Don, I'll begin with you. What experiences and qualifications would make you a good board member?
Can anybody hear me? Well, I've been in business in the air for 25 years, self-employed. Like she said, I have a lot of business background. I have a B.S. in business economics. I have a master's in public administration. My wife, Lisa, we've been married 22 years. She was on the Booster Club officer the last three years. And I've got to see a lot of ins and outs of that situation to the school. I'm basically in construction, so I have the ability... My specialty is construction, it's big cost estimates, budgeting, and so on. And I know the school's in... They have a lot of repair and upgrades. So I just feel that I'm a good candidate because I know the previous board and everyone's been working toward this to get the school enough and better upgrades in technology and more space for our students and stuff as we grow. And I just feel like I'm a good candidate for the upcoming progress. Hopefully, our proposition for our school will pass, and I can see this project through and help, give as much help as I can.
Angela, same question.
I started at Washington School. Notice I didn't stay in Washington, Franklin, when I was four. And I graduated from Farmington High School. One of the things I love about Farmington is being able to come back and be a part of the community and the district. While I was gone, I taught for 31 years in the Hazelwood School District, in middle school and high school. And that was an experience that I carry with me to the board. I also have more experience. I have spent all of my life in school, sometimes as a teacher, sometimes as a student, and sometimes as both. My education at Farmington enabled me to get a master's in communication from Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville, and then something of which I am very proud, my master's social work at Washington University at George Warren Brown, which is the number one school of social work in the U.S. One of the things that has been helpful to me, besides my board experience, has been being able to be in mental health. And as I have worked as a therapist in mental health, and so I bring not only school experience with me, but 13 years in the mental health field. I think I am extremely qualified to hold this office. Thank you.
Howard.
I began my education in Dehren and spent six years there until Dehren consolidated with Farmington in 1966 and graduated from Farmington High School. I taught 28 years, taught and did various other duties in the Farmington School District. For the last 21 years, I'm a math number, but 24 years since 1990, I have sat in boardroom for board meetings every month. I've seen some great administrators come and go through this district. I've seen some great board members, which we have so many audience tonight, that have given their time and come through this district and helped this district. I was fortunate enough to be able to help with two bond issues in the district for their successful passage and was able to work with the construction of those projects and enjoyed that very much. I will let you decide my qualifications, whether or not I'm qualified to run for a board of education. It should be your choice. Thank you.
Hi. First off, I just wanted to say that I'm a mother of two kids, Jonah Barnes, who's a senior at Farmington High School, and the lady Barnes will be entering seventh grade next year. And I think that that alone is a qualification for maybe helping my kids' future scholastic achievements and trying to be involved and serve in the community in order to be aware of changes to allow them to succeed. I believe in education. I graduated from Exeter Springs High School in Kansas. I was the very first person in my family ever to go to college. I graduated from the University of Kansas School of Pharmacy, and I have worked as a district manager, pharmacy manager, managing $65 million businesses and up to 300 employees at a time. Also, was the executive vice president here with USA Home Stores. Moved to this area in 2007 to take over that job. I'm very excited about this community and what this community has to offer in education. One of the first things that we noticed when we came here was to look at the school qualifications to see if this would be a good fit for my family. We were very pleased with the production of education and the quality of education our kids would get. So I feel like I'm very qualified to be able to budget through those capacities that I've had. Also, I've had extensive leadership training through the John Maxwell Program, as I've traveled around the United States to programs to enhance my leadership skills in order to develop and give people goals and accountability and leadership in trying to make things better.
Bobby.
Well, I also went to Dehren's school, graduated from Farmington. Spent several years in industrial maintenance work. For the past 15 years, I've owned my own businesses. The biggest thing is, the reason I'm here is for my kids. I have three kids in the district, anywhere from grade school to high school. And I just feel that I want to get a hold of all of their educations and get a hold of what's, you know, really happening in the schools and to further help with what's going on. Thanks.
Question two. Angela, what was the one issue in the school district or educational environment in general that was a catalyst for you to run for a position on the Board of Education? Please describe the issue and your position in relation to it.
Well, I think that after I'd served several terms and wasn't re-elected, I thought, well, this is over. This was a good run, and it was enjoyable, and I thought I did my part in public service. And then I got phone calls from people who asked me to come back to be on the board because they felt like that I had qualities which would be helpful to promote Farmington R7. And so with that in mind, and it was a tough decision, I did decide to return to the board. And it was always about the health and leadership of Farmington R7. And so I think that one of the most important things that I could provide and had been called upon to do is to be that leader who understands the importance of not only education, but of the safety and well-being of our students. And I think that that's... Those are the two qualities that I have been called back to this board to do, and I'm taking that very seriously. Understanding what our students need and what's important for them to know as we move forward through our Common Core, through the curriculum. I have that piece to add, and I think that's what's been important for me to do on this board.
What was one issue in the school district or educational environment in general that was a catalyst for you to run for a position on the Board of Education? Please describe the issue and your position in relation to it.
I was fortunate enough to spend my entire career mostly here in the Farmington School District and had many opportunities to support myself and my family. My last 10 years, I was associate superintendent of schools, in charge of building grounds, and oversaw several projects that were taken on in the district. I came back to be able to help with those programs, to pass bond issues, to build buildings, to provide those things for kids in our district that we sometimes need but can't afford through a regular budget. I think it's very, very important that we realize that with the 2008 meltdown of monies that we were receiving in this district, and now we don't have that, it's necessary to talk to the public about a bond issue and about supporting the school district and getting money through bonds. I came back to be able to help with that process, and I felt like I had something to give back, and I enjoy that, and I do not mind working hard to be able to support a bond issue and get what's needed for kids and staff in this district. Thank you.
Hi. I don't think it's a secret in the community that there has been some dissatisfaction in some of the athletic programs, and I was an advocate for speaking up to the board to bring concerns that I didn't think that they were aware of to the board. Sometimes I think that by saying that, it might make me sound very one-sided, and I don't believe that it is, and I wanted to be honest about that. The thing that's most important is that when we did bring up issues to the board, it was a very wonderful learning experience for me to understand the processes that have to happen in order to see change occur, or at least to make people informed enough to be able to make educated decisions about growth and development in schools. So I'm not embarrassed about that at all. I feel very positive. I also was very positively influenced by the board when we were in those meetings and attending meetings, as well as speaking with the superintendent and other key administration within the school district. And it also opened my eyes to be able to see that there are lots of issues that need to be addressed in our school district. There are wonderful programs that are being developed. There are wonderful ideas that are out there that need to be fostered. And there's some things that need to be challenged. And I'm a person that speaks honestly and not afraid to speak out loud. I'm very willing to listen and to hear what things need to be and try to give an unbiased view. And I think that, to answer the question, I believe that was probably the one thing that kept me going, but there's lots of things that have kept me going that are exciting to see about potential future on school board.
I'm the same as Kelly there. It's a... There's a lot of things that have our good and bad, you know, on all cases, that this school district is a super, super school district, I believe. And that's, again, that's why I say my... You know, that's the reason we are here, is for the kids. We need to make sure that you guys have the tools and the resources there for you to educate the kids and get them ready for the education. And that's what... I was kind of the same way. Once we've seen a lot of the other things and started going, some of the meetings and stuff, it gives a longer understanding of how things do work and what we need to do and what to help with the process of the kids with their educations. And that was one of the big drives that made me do this.
Don, same question.
As a backup, I do also have two children in the Farmington School District, one an eighth grade and one's a senior. And this is one of the main reasons why I'm here. To go along with that, I think security for our kids is a must and a good reason that I'm here and I'm pushed for that. And, you know, the renovating of our schools, we've been in basketball games, and guys just start storming outside, and you go out the hallways and there's a big trashcan with drips in them, and people from other schools looking at us like, what is going on? This is a school this size, like, why would this be? So I think a lot of upgrading facilities. I think you've got to have a safe environment, a good building, facilities for our students and our teachers to get a good education and also to perform well. And our transportation, you've got to have good buildings and a way to get there, so transportation's not a big thing for me. But there's a lot of them, like the other two on the end there, Bobby and Kelly said, you know. There's a lot of issues, little issues here and there, that I think can be ironed out in the school. A lot of times you get people that's, you know, basically, they're around all the time and they don't get another outlook, you know, from different ones that's been in the community. And if you're around the people all the time, you kind of start thinking the same. So I think that's important to think about. Thank you.
Howard will start the question for you. If elected, what role would you play in communicating with parents, students, and staff regarding their needs?
I think it's important that you're visual in the community, and I think it's important that you're at context, and I think it's important that you're in schools to be able to let them know you're there to listen. It's very, very important to be part of the community. However, when you actually realize your vision as a board member, you may have grandiose ideas, but you actually have two jobs. It's the hiring and firing superintendent and policy, and that's what you do as a board member. And you ask for the administration with an entrust plan to bring to you decisions that will be made for daily operations in the district. So what I do, and what I do when I sit with the Board of Education, I'm just one person, but I'm there to listen to the qualified, capable people that bring things to the board and what they want changed and what they want to continue to happen. It's because the way we've always done it works. So I'm there just as one member of the board, listening to the administrators as they come forward and staff what they want. But really, my role is sitting back in the shadows as a person that just makes policy and hiring and firing is my job.
Good question.
I agree with Howard that I think that no matter what impact that you want to have as a servant in the community, that you have to be a visible part of the community, being at events of all types. Obviously, I'm fighting towards athletics. I was an athlete at college. That's kind of one of my draws. But also being able to support other programs, they're just as important and more important than athletics as well, being able to be seen and to support the community and be able to see, let the kids see that. One of the things that I think has been very successful in my business that I take very seriously is the ability to have people entrust in me, come to me, give me positive feedback, negative feedback, and let us do something with the information people give us. And then it's not just going to follow in their ears and have a pat on the back. When people come to me with issues and concerns, I feel like once it crosses my desk, it has to be addressed in some capacity. And I feel like that sometimes is a very difficult situation to be in because you end up with a lot of stuff on your desk that you have to deal with. But at the same time, we're here as community servants to assist and make things better in any way we can. So if people bring information to us, or to me as a board member, also that I would listen and be concerned, but also to be able to challenge the status quo and to say, what can we do as a community to make this better for these people? Whether these people are teachers and educators, or their students, or their families, their parents, what is it that we need to do? I feel like a lot of people don't come and talk to people because they don't feel like they can make a difference.
You know, what Howard said, as far as you're just one member on the board, you know, it seems like what we've got is, a lot of people are scared to come and say anything to the board. And I was, in my case, I didn't understand how, you know, to talk to the board or how even to approach the board about a problem that we had. And I think a lot of the community is the same way. They don't understand how it works and to get your problems and your suggestions and everything to somebody to listen. You know, and that's why I think if you're out in the public and people, you're talking to people, parents, teachers, all the time, the more that you can bring to their with questions and answers and stuff is a big part of it.
Don.
Yeah, to go along with what Bobby said, you know, in my business, we employ, you know, a couple hundred people. And you have to make it, the community feel like they're part of the school. Like I tell my workers, look, if this, let's say we built a new home, if this house is good, we all have a big part in this thing. We can sell this house, and guess what? You got another job, we can start another house. I think that's how a school system is, you know. People like to feel like they're part of the school, you know. It's like when you've got a child in sports, a lot of times these coaches think, well, the parent has no say-so, they have nothing, they just need to get back and, you know, get in the back closets, stay out the way. But really, if you have a child on the team, and I'm sure a lot of you have, you're part of the team too. You're a quiet, a silent partner, you know what the kid's going on, you know pretty much what goes on. And I just think like, you have to be, make people feel like they're part of the situation and that that causes people to, you know, want to interact and be more into the school system.
Okay. Question four, Kelly, we'll start with you. What are your thoughts? If I'm to answer your question...
Oh, Angela, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Angela. Okay. Read that question again, I want to make sure that I'm really focused on it.
I sure will. I'll do that for you. If elected, what role would you play in communicating with parents, students, and staff regarding their needs?
One of the things that I'm so proud of with this particular board is, and I said this the first day of school to staff, and that is, this board listens. And there is not a person on the present board who doesn't bring something to every meeting from a student, a parent, a staff member for discussion. And this board works together. They do not micromanage, but they are open and they have put it out there to the public. You know, we're a big part of this community, we represent this community on this board, and we want to make sure that we can follow this information to the people who need to know this. The administration, Matt Ruhl, and all people that work for him. He is our only employee. As a board member, we hire him, but we want to make sure that he has all the information that he needs to do his job adequately. And that's what you do when you're on the board. You hire somebody, you help them out as much as you can, and you make sure that you're in the community, you're visible, people know that they can come to you. And I say, I'm in the book. You have anything you want to talk to me about, call me. And I get phone calls. But that's the way it works, and you know how important it is to be respectful to other people. And the way you do that is by being a really good listener. And then you take that information and you take it to the people who need to know so they can do their job. And that's the way I see myself, as a listener.
Now, question four, Kelly. What are your thoughts on the new Common Core state standards? What benefits do these have for our district?
I knew you were going to give me a tough one. Well, not being in education definitely puts me in as a day that you're being able to answer fully the Common Core question, especially when sitting with people that are in education for their whole careers. I've done some research, I've read many articles about Common Core. I've seen a lot of the pressure and tension that's going on in legislation right now about Common Core. My position on Common Core is I feel like, I feel like it could be a good thing. I feel like it should be a good thing. I think the intention behind Common Core is a good thing in order to create a standard across the nation that allows the standards for each level of education to be standardized. I think there's a worry, and I don't know how this is all going to play out, it's the same as if no one else knows how it's going to play out. There's a worry on how that plan will be executed in each school district uniquely. How that will happen in our school district, I'm not sure. I think that's something that I will learn as we continue to go in the board if I'm elected. I feel very positive that, given that all the educators that I know and I've spoken to feel very comfortable having criteria in order to teach, as long as they have the freedom to teach it the way that they feel needs to be taught. And then I know that there's some controversy around how things will be tested, and I think that's still kind of up in the air right now from what I've read also. So I support it. I think that there's, it's exciting to see if we do something as a country, we do it well, what the outcome could be. But I still feel like there's some worry and some trust issues with how that will be executed.
Same question.
Same way, the way I'm understanding the Common Core is the, it's just federally regulated on how we teach. I believe it's just on math and English side, if I'm reading this right. And the biggest thing is, is the teachers have the free, a little bit of the freedom to teach, it's like what Kelly was saying, on the way they want to teach, but still keep the scoring and stuff where the federal government wants their regulations is the big part of it. The biggest thing is, is making sure the teachers have their criteria and the tools and stuff they need in order to teach on the side of the core, this new federal regulation stuff. So that's where my, you know, as a board member, that's the biggest thing, is making sure that the teachers have what they need in order to get the kids ready for, you know, their careers for college or whatever kind of career they have to enter.
Don.
Yeah, kind of what Bobby said, you know, I'm kind of for that. I think, you know, if you try a new program, nobody really knows 100% if it's going to be successful. You just got to go out there, you know, put it on the table and see the goods and bads about it. I think there's a lot of goods about it and some bads. I think, you know, teaching will have a little bit more freedom to conduct their classrooms. You know, they make such a big issue with the scores. I think a little bit too much for funding and so on. And, you know, each state and town is different, and each school is different, so... But I feel it's a start, you know, it's a good thing to start with and, you know, hopefully to succeed if it doesn't, you know, I'm sure somebody thinks of something else, so that's how I feel about that.
Yes, Howard.
Well, it's very important that we have some kind of a plan and goals in mind and expectations because we have accountability in public education. We have to, we are obliged by law to educate our students and prepare them for what happens after graduation. And at this point in time, there, you know, we've done some of the research, and we know that some of our technology, people who are, need to be prepared to go into the technology fields, aren't quite ready for that. And we're hearing that from the workplace, hey, we need people ready to step into these positions, and they're not. And so we have to take a look at, what are we going to expect these people to do? So we've got to set some standards. And you can call it Common Core or whatever name you select to use, especially in English and math, we have to say, we expect people to know, the students to know this at any given age, so that we have a goal and we have a preparation in mind. One of the things that the Smarter Balance assessment is going to be doing is taking a look at this assessment and saying, all right, are we over-assessing our students? So what I'm looking forward to personally is not testing quite so much, giving more instructional time, and then enabling, using technology to get those scores in right away and not spending so much money on assessment. So I'm looking forward to the Smarter Balance and how that's going to work out. And as far as Common Core is concerned, we need to have expectations about students. They need to be reasonable. We need to make sure that kids are learning what they need to learn as they move along, preparing for the workplace or preparing for college. And I think that's what Common Core is all about.
Okay. Howard.
Years ago, I struggled as a middle school principal... Years ago, I struggled as a middle school principal, looking at curriculum and assessment. Not that I personally struggled, but those of you in education know that you cannot be successful with kids if your curriculum doesn't match your assessment. So whatever we do in Farmington schools, we have to work very, very hard to make sure that what we prepare for kids and what we give kids through the curriculum matches how we are assessing them. Now, in no way does Farmington ever need to take a backseat to anybody around as far as what we teach and how we teach kids, because we do an excellent job with that. What is important, what is important for us to realize is that sometimes people from outside of Farmington, where we are sitting here, members trying to be or retain or get on the Board of Education to decide what's important for kids in Farmington. Well, sometimes I, I struggle with that in that I think it's more important than we think sometimes what locally our kids need to know, but there is Common Core, there are things that are gonna be mandatory, we have to adjust and deal with it and do the best we can.
Bobby, we'll start with you for our last question of the evening. What are your thoughts and feelings about the bond issue? Do you feel like this is important for the district? Why or why not?
I, I feel it's very important. The last, the last bond issue we had, we disappointed in this, but just a few close. This bond issue, I mean, I don't see a reason why it would pass. The utmost importance that I think is the safety and security upgrades of the schools. We all say it can never happen to us, but I'm sure that's what all the other schools said too. You know, I'm sure you guys are all aware of what, what is involved with the bond issue and the security parts, the additional classrooms at the middle school, I believe Roosevelt, the high school. It's just very important, and I think Matt's done a real good job of getting, getting it out there and making people understand of how it's working and it's not a, it's not a tax increase bond issue. So to me, the security upgrades are the most important.
Don?
Yeah, I think it's a great thing. I think it's handled a lot better this round. Seems like last round, I think a lot of people in the community thought, well, you know, they're just gonna have this several million dollar gym out there, and what's in it for us? What was it, other kids, it doesn't do sports and so on. I think they pushed that way too hard. This time, I think they kind of put that on the back, quieter, and they made it more realistic as far as, you know, as you watch the news all the time, security for our children, I mean, that's, that's a big thing. I mean, like Bobby said, you never know. You think we're in a safe community, but that when you put your guard down, that's when something happens. So I'm, I'm all for it. I think it'd do great things for our school, I think it'd upgrade a lot of things. Technology's a way of the future, I think it'd vastly improve that situation. You know, our transportation isn't, like I said before, you know, get newer buses, knock it down our gas, our fuel expenses, our repairs on our buses, you know, just improving everything about our school that this money will provide will be a major, major plus. And I think Mr. Rubble's done a good job promoting this, and I think the teachers talked good about it, and I think, I think it passed. Thank you.
Angela?
I am so glad you asked me this question. This is absolutely vital. Ma'am, Don, I will not let you down. I have heard this spiel over and over again. I have, I have a kid in that group, if he could get five dogs together, he would be talking them into voting for the bond issue, and they would do it. This is so important to our district. We have so many vital things to, to address. Don, you mentioned going, being at the gym and being at the high school, and the roof is leaking, it's not safe. We absolutely have got to do this, and we need the bond issue ready to do it because our formula doesn't get funded, and we have to use, we, we don't, we want to use money where it can do its best and get the most from, bang for our buck. We need buses, we need extra classrooms, we've got a FEMA grant, and we're going to utilize that money in the very best way possible. Matt's done an excellent job of going back to the drawing board and finding out exactly what our needs are. There's no fluff here. We have kids who can't fit in our high school gym. We have the same gym we had since 1959, and we have to expand because we have more kids. We've gotta be prepared with more classrooms, we have to upgrade our technology, there are so many needs that we have, and this bond issue will address that. And I don't know about you, but I've got a bottle of champagne in my refrigerator, and the minute that bond issue passes, that supper's gonna be open. Please vote yes.
Howard?
I don't think there's any question in anybody's mind of the need that we have in the district. We, we looked at bond issues in the last 14 years, the bond issue of 2000, the bond issue 2006, the bond issue 2012. There's a common theme in all three of those bond issues, it's trust. 2000, David Krantz, you attended schools, the community trusted him with being able to improve our facilities. 2006, there was trust put in W L Sanders at the time to improve our facilities. 2012, we didn't have that trust, we didn't get to support it in the community. Matt, Don, I put your best foot forward, explained to the public what we need, why we need that, what's best for kids. Their need, the need is there. The more exciting thing that I think for the community is that it's a no tax increase, but there's $28 million that's gonna be spent locally here when that bond passes, and that's a tremendous thing for our community. Not just our community, for the middle area, there are three other bond issues that are running now, and I think that all three pass, totaling about $60 million in the middle area that will be turned over multiple times through bond issues, no tax increase. I hope you support us. Thank you.
I think it goes without saying that you've got a panel of rubeers up here, so I'm gonna definitely put my hat in the ring for rubeing the bond issue. It goes without saying, whatever one else has said, I'll just reiterate, that the safety of our, our students and our teachers is, is about most of the points. When it comes to putting our district in a position to excel and to, to exceed any expectations that we set for ourselves, we have to have a minimum standard. Our buildings are in disrepair in certain capacities, our transportation is in disrepair in certain capacities, and we have, we have to bring ourselves and the district in these, in these areas up to a basic standard. And once we do that, then we can feel comfortable, and then we can move forward, and we can move faster into moving into other areas of importance as well. But you can't do that until you have the basic structure. You have to house people, you have to feed people, you have to give them basic comforts, and those are what we need to do in the very beginning. So make things safer, expand on the needs, not only today, but to expand the classroom size for, for 10 years from now, improve the technology. My daughter's in sixth grade, so she's got six more years in school, plus four in college if we're so lucky. We need to be training her for a job 10 years from now, where the jobs 10 years from now, they're gonna be heavily, even more heavily technology-based, so we need to be ready today for those students moving forward. So I'm a huge advocate for it as well, and I agree for your vote for that as well.
These are all the questions that I have this evening. Granny, is there anything else?
Thank you all for coming tonight, and we hope you come out known on April 8th. And thank you guys for being up there and letting us learn a little bit more about you guys.
And I think, I think it goes without saying, and we want to thank you, Granny, and we want to thank Sean for hosting this with a bunch of questions.